Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order this evening. This is a meeting of the Sanford City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Under the meeting format, the meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and be a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted May 3rd, 2022. Members of the public may join by phone. That's provided in the agenda. There's also a meeting identification number for people to participate by Zoom, and we have many people on the Zoom this evening who can participate no differently than being here in this room. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email citydepartments/citycouncil. At this point in time, I'd ask the audience to stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like to call for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is roll call, but we're going to dispense of that. We're going to dispense of two items here immediately. The first is Order 23-13-01, ordered to accept the resignation of Becky A. Brink from her position as Sanford City Council member. So in your packet, you have a resignation pursuant to the legal council stating that the resignation is appropriate as a city councillor can only occupy one seat. Therefore, the recommendation was that then city councillor Becky Brink should offer her resignation, which she has as city councillor, to be effective immediately upon the city council's acceptance. And from there, we will proceed with a swearing in. So I would call for an acceptance of the resignation, please.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Becky Brink in her role as city councillor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Mike can't vote, I mean.
Oh, yep.
He can't vote on this.
You're not sworn in yet.
Councillor-elect Trenchmontane cannot yet vote. You hold for another two minutes. Sorry.
Well, not as of December 31st. We got to swear you guys in first before we can vote.
So the next way of Order 23-2-01.
He's not a city councillor either.
Well, he is. He's going to get sworn in to start his new term.
But Pete can vote too, then.
Well, no, he's not been sworn in before.
Not even. Whatever. It doesn't make any sense.
All right. So the next order is swearing in of Becky A. Brink as mayor of Sanford pursuant to Section 303 of the Sanford City Charter.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Becky Brink.
I, Becky Brink.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Maine.
and of the state of Maine.
and that I will in all respects.
and I will in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances of the City of Sanford.
and ordinances of the City of Sanford.
and statutes of the state of Maine.
and statutes of the state of Maine.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties as a city mayor.
the duties as a city mayor.
for the city of Sanford.
for the city of Sanford.
Congratulations.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
That was a nice ceremonial touch, Madam Mayor.
So at this point in time, I'll hand the gavel over to our newly appointed mayor. Thank you.
My husband's going to regret that I have this.
First of all, I'd like to thank my husband, who is in the audience, Bill Brink. He's been quite the support person for my running for mayor. And also, I have grandchildren who are probably online watching. And every person who runs for an office has signs made. And my grandchildren like to put those on their lawns, and they took pictures of them, and they actually posted them online. So it was great to have them be a part of this. And because I'm of a certain age, I have to put my glasses on to read. I stand here as mayor, humble and hopeful, honored to be the fourth mayor in the history of Sanford. It's only been a few years since we became a city. There are several people who lay the foundation for Sanford's mayor, which are the first three mayors. The first mayor was Maury Hurley. The second mayor was Tom Cody. The third mayor was Anne-Marie Mistracchio. I'd like to thank all of them for their service. Sanford successfully came out of the other side of the pandemic, thanks to our city manager, Steve Buck, and his staff. He and his staff exemplified their devotion to the people of Sanford by spending the time and the commitment necessary to keep all departments open for business. Thank you for your service. To the volunteers and community organizations who have assisted in providing help to those in need by shopping, picking up prescriptions, providing meals, and supporting the food banks. A simple thank you will never be enough, but I am extremely proud of our city and the people within it. Thank you for your service. As we continue to come out of COVID restrictions, I ask that we are understanding and tolerant. People have been affected by COVID in many different ways, and the speed we individually start to recover may be different. I look out today and see a proud city and a proud history. Generations of industrious, hardworking people who built this great city. I stand here today as your mayor, and I make one solemn promise: to the generations who came before us and the generations to come after us, we will continue to build this great city and leave it better, stronger, and fairer, and more prosperous than when we found it. I want to thank all of you and all the people out there who voted for me. I really appreciate your vote. And thank Now, to the next swearing in of Robert Stackpole and Peter Trenchmontane. This is 23-401. And they're going to be sworn in as city council members pursuant to Section 207 of the Sanford City Charter. Don't worry, I'll get the hang of this eventually.
I'll have each of you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and each of you, say your name, please.
I, Robert Stackpole.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Maine.
and of the state of Maine.
that I will in all respects.
that I will in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances of the City of Sanford.
and ordinances of the City of Sanford.
and statutes of the state of Maine.
and statutes of the state of Maine.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties as a city councillor.
the duties as a city councillor.
for the city of Sanford.
for the city of Sanford.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're so good.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome back, Bob.
And now for the roll call. Deputy Mayor Maury Hurley.
Present.
Councillor Bob Stackpole.
Present.
Councillor Hanselman.
Present.
Councillor Pete Trenchmontane.
Present.
And Councillor Jonathan Martell has an excused absence tonight, but he might be coming in late. And I'm Mayor Becky Brink. And also present are our city manager, Steve Buck, and executive assistant, Larissa Ricketts. Now for the minutes, 23-5-01, ordered to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on December 20th, 2022. Do I have a motion? Councillor Man Hurley.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? I'll second that. And all in favor? You can vote.
No.
No, you can't because you weren't part of that meeting.
Oh, we're really close. Okay, we're really close.
And the same way with the next one?
After this, we should be golden.
23-6-01, ordered to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held December 19th, 2022.
You okay there?
Your hand goes up before I finish. I'm going to call you councillor Hurley until...
Well, we'll see.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second, please. Councillor Hanselman?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Does his report come in now?
You get mayor's reports.
Do we go back?
No, you're the mayor.
Okay. Do we have any subcommittee reports? I didn't think we had any from last week. And city manager's report, Steve Buck.
Thank you. So the last two weeks is kind of that in-between everything, Christmas, New Years, and such. So it's been a bit slower than is typical. But I would like to point out a couple of training opportunities. There is a newly elected officials workshop. It's going to be held on January 19th, 2023, from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. by Zoom. This is put on by Main Municipal Association. It is the newly elected officials workshop, so many of you have attended that in the past. I'm pleased that they're doing it by Zoom, so you don't have to travel all the way to Augusta or some other remote location. It's a perfect opportunity for elected officials to take advantage of the expertise that the Main Municipal Association has to offer, attain a better understanding of your role as a public official, and stay abreast of ever-changing local government responsibilities and issues. They cover such topics as what are our rights and duties as officials? Can we hold multiple offices? Which of our meetings are open to the public? Must we have an agenda and take minutes? What ordinances can we enact? What are liabilities and immunities? And what is a disqualifying conflict of interest? So those are just some of the topics that they will cover. I've been to this multiple times over the years with councillors. It's a very beneficial workshop, and I would highly recommend it to anyone who has not previously attended. The next one is a new, I've not seen this before. I'm glad that they're offering this. It is the Legislative Process from A to Z. It's going to be held on January 31st from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m., also by Zoom, so you don't have to travel. The course seeks to provide elected officials with information and knowledge of the state legislative process should they choose to participate in advocacy for any future and/or pending state legislation. So information on how best to communicate with the state legislators and how to participate in public hearings and work sessions held by the state legislators will be conveyed. Kate Defore, who is the director of MMA's Advocacy and Communications Department, will conduct an interactive session on how municipal officials can advocate for their community's interests. Participants will learn how the legislation is enacted, the resources available for engaging in the process, and tips to ensure that local officials' voices are heard. Let's see. And they're going to offer that as an interactive Zoom meeting. So they recommend that you have video and audio functionality to participate. Next, airport improvements, as recently reported by our airport manager, Allison Navia. The last elements of the utilities are being completed on the Phase 2 of the Presidential Lane Extension. The demand for these newly developed lots has been even greater than anticipated. There is interest at this point for the coming year to build two more multi-unit hangars, which will store an additional 16 to 20 planes. And there's also interest in two of the large commercial hangar sites. If those sites are developed as anticipated, this will leave only four pre-permitted lots left on the second portion of Presidential The next is simply a report. I've been watching this in the news on flavored tobacco products. As the city has worked in the past to license and set conditions for the sale of tobacco products and associated products to preclude the exposure and sale of said products to minors, I've been monitoring the last four major municipalities, which is South Portland, Portland, Brunswick, and Bangor, who have currently banned the sale of flavored tobacco and what they've been going through with that. To that end, it's now known that there is state legislation coming forward at the state level that will also seek to ban the sale of flavored tobacco and vaping products statewide. So I'm going to continue to monitor that, and I'll report that back to the city council as it develops. The last bit that I have here is from the Codes and Planning Department. Wind Development has submitted their site plan for the redevelopment of the Stent and Trust complex. It's estimated to be in excess of 5,000-page submission, and it represents a substantial investment made by the developer. Early indications is that the application is extremely comprehensive and exceptionally well-done. We look forward to processing that. Also, the Nassau dorms. Code recently met with the developer, Greenmires, towards the completion of their pending application to redevelop the complex of the former dormitories. They anticipate to submit in time for the first planning board meeting in February to start their process. Parallel with the site plan will be an application for the rezoning of the parcels from single-family residential to urban zone, and a concurrent application for a contract zone, which will then reduce the urban zone allowances to a pedestrian-scale development of the property in keeping with a comprehensive plan for an extension of the Springvale Village character of development. That's all I have.
Thank you. Did you read the whole 5,000 pages of that?
I haven't seen the application yet, but...
Communications and Presentations, 22556-01. We have Fire Chief Steve Benati is going to do a report on the state of the fire department.
Good evening. I thought this was befitting because this is one of my last days in office. I'm all done at the end of next week, as most people know. And I just wanted to let you know where the fire department stood before I stepped my happy little feet out the door. So I'm just going to give you a couple of statistics from this last year, and then give you a rundown of a few other items. For the year of 2022, the fire department closed out with 4,415 calls for service, which is up 7% from last year and is up about 14.5% over the last five years. Of those, there were 80 fires. There were 38 fires involving structures. We involved 228 motor vehicle crashes, almost 3,300 medical calls. And as an interesting statistic, too, is the amount of overlap that we had, multiple calls going on at the same time. So there were 1,841 calls that overlapped each other. So it means multiple units were running to different situations at the same time. Of that, 41.7% of the calls were overlaps. We gave mutual aid to neighboring communities 126 times, and we received mutual aid 40 times. And we also had a total training hours of personnel of about 4,300 hours. So they're just some little statistics for the end of the year. This is where I learned I put it really big, so I can see. So there's a lot of pages, but I didn't have to remember my glasses. So anyway, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to take a few minutes to give you some updates about your fire and EMS department. But first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the City of Sanford. Our thank for the opportunity afforded to me to lead this extraordinary organization for the last eight years. I wish to thank all of the city agencies for their continued help and support when requested. The police, and in particular, Tim Strout, who has always been a gentleman and a wonderful professional to work with. The Communication Center, Public Works, and Pete Smith's work, that he's always lending an extra hand to the fire department. HR did a step-up, standout job for the last number of years because of the number of positions we had open, and we kept them plenty busy in filling positions. So both Stacy Howes and Stacy Johnson were on the forefront as well. Ronnie Champlin in Finance, who is a great asset to the department and to the city, as well being a great person, and helped lead us down the right roads when we had questions due to finance. Jamie in his Codes Department, also very helpful. And of course, Sue Cody, when we always asked her for promotional ceremonies and that sort of thing, she was there to step up to do the swearing in as well. So we appreciate that all. And there's many others, but, and I shouldn't say names at all because I forget people, and then they feel out of place. But we can't do our job without the cooperation of others, and particularly, we want to wish the city manager, Steve Buck, for his support and guidance for both me and the fire department through my tenure here. It's been a great relationship, and we've got a lot accomplished by putting our heads together. From the day I arrived in Sanford, I realized there was a core of tremendous talent within the fire department. A refinement was needed to make that talent useful to the city, and I think we have accomplished that, as I have never worked with such a great group of people ever to accomplish the missions we are tasked with. The city is truly blessed to have such a great group of people working for you, who not only want to do things right, but care deeply for the people that they serve. I would like to talk briefly about some of the accomplishments this department has achieved in the last eight years. In 2014, we gathered our officers and key staff and members, excuse me, and the city manager together for a strategic planning summit to set a new course for our department. The original summit in 2014 brought out a number of items which needed attention within the fire department. Facilities, they were inadequate with safety concerns, tight line issues, health issues, et cetera. We all know about that. We had an issue with a number of duty personnel, as the insufficient to handle the workload that we were dealing with. And then we had a fleet of apparatus that was outdated and in poor shape and needed essential updates. Those are the three main concerns at that original summit. There were a number of other items that were un-concerned, but these topped the list of need. And from this, plans were drawn for a new deployment of moving from three stations to two to maximize the operations for the city. Two initial studies were done, and renditions for fire stations were drafted, although these studies included the personnel needs, and a plan was negotiated with the city for a stepped increase of personnel. A plan was developed through CIP for the replacement of apparatus through tax dollars, grants, and consolidation of type and kind of apparatus. In 2022, a second summit was held, which covered many of the items, including the continued need for new facilities, as the city has not done all it has to do to get this essential item taken care of. Also, the number of personnel, as the agreement that was negotiated, has not been adhered to for the timeline, and therefore, the outstanding need for personnel still stands. Training needs and programs for the department that are consistent and meet the needs of the community. This is not your father's fire department. This is not your grandfather's fire department. Our needs and duties and responsibilities change year to year. And it's hard, and I won't say hard, it's difficult at times to keep up with all the changes, both legal and training needs and stuff that go on. And it's just something that's going to constantly be there for a long time to come. The department's public interactions, including education programs. We know as a department we aren't in the public enough, except on emergency situations. It's hard for us to get out and interact with the public as much as we should, but we know that's on our radar, and we're going to make an effort to do more, so that they know us more as community members and not just emergency responders. The medical and safety needs of the senior citizens who live in our city. We have a very senior population in our city, and there are a lot of programs that could help those people in the city if we would have a chance to expound on the programs we can deliver. The number-one call for service that we do in recent years has been falls. We deal with a lot of elderly people that fall. Some of them result in injuries, some of it just need a hand to get back up. But as a result, there are a lot of programs that we can help with that can help eliminate some of these falls, because falls for elderly people are never good, but also it will help in the aspect of it reduces the need for emergency response and ties up those 911 services as well. The ever-increasing number of calls for service, which, like I told you in the beginning, is going up at percentages each year, and a new one that's really never hampered the Sanford Fire Department before, and that's recruitment and retention. We are now behind the eight ball with dealing with other fire departments, and it's not anything necessarily that we did. We are behind in the eight ball in respect of our facilities. Most people don't want to work in the facilities we have. We are behind in the eight ball in the pay scale now, too, because COVID kind of blew the pay scales out of the water, as you well know, in all aspects of city government, and the fire department's no different. But beyond that, it's the aspect of starting to pay paramedics what paramedics are truly worth to the city. I had a senior paramedic come to me about two weeks ago, and he said, "You know, chief, I'm not going to do this, but if I went to Walmart and worked as a grocery picker, I could make $2 more an hour than what I make right now." And I had to think about that for a minute. So the biggest mistake he could make as a grocery picker would be, maybe I picked the house brand instead of the name brand and get that mixed up. But as a paramedic, he's got to worry about whether he draws .5 milliliters of a substance or .05 in a drug, which could have catastrophic results if he did the wrong thing. So when we think about what we put forward and what we want these people to do in the street and the lives that they truly save, and we talk about firemen saving lives all the time, and we make rescues over ladders and that sort of thing, we save lives more often every week through our medical program than we ever do in the number of lives that we save from fires. And not that we don't, and that's purely just because of numbers, because 74% of what we do is medical work. And we have a lot of elderly people, we have a lot of cardiac issues, we have all kinds of situations. But the direct intervention that our paramedics are able to deal in the street makes a huge difference in the welfare of the people who live here. This all being said, I'm here to tell you that the City of Sanford is protected by one of the finest fire EMS organizations in Maine, and we have recruited and staffed our ranks with some of the best firefighter/paramedics in New England. Despite the lack of proper pay and facilities, they still endure. These incredible men and women work tirelessly to not only save lives from fires and rescue situations, but also through our extensive medical treatment program, as I just stated. If you're going to have a medical problem or an episode in the city, you are surrounded by the best fire EMS organization you could ask for to help mitigate that, and I will guarantee that. This does not come by accident, but with continued training, dedication, and a caring spirit for the people we protect. But all operations are now at a point that both the lack of essential personnel, proper facilities, and a hardship in recruitment has an effect on our operations, deployment, health, safety, and legality of workplace conditions. And please don't take this the wrong way, but I must say this, okay? I urge you in the strongest terms to take action regarding the construction and new fire facilities within the city. It is paramount for the ongoing sense of the community and the welfare for everybody involved. In this world, the work and the need for a strong, trained, fit, and equipped fire EMS organization is only to become more necessary for people of our fine city because of the lapses of proper medical care, changes in economic classifications, fire safety problems, domestic terrorism, lack of volunteers, and the like. Having a strong, healthy fire EMS organization in our city builds to the economic value of the city as we look to attract new businesses, industry, and families. One of the things we were competing with when I talked about recruitment and retention... One of the things we were competing with when I talked about recruitment and retention is a lot of the smaller towns now in Maine that never had full-time firefighters are now hiring them, and some of them are throwing big money at them to come to their small town to help protect their town. So the pool of firefighters is getting smaller and smaller. Years ago, we would have fifty-plus applicants want to sign up every time we ran a test because there was that much enthusiasm and that many people that wanted to be firefighter EMS people. That's not the case anymore. The medical industry is, in large, is seeing that with nurses as well. COVID had a lot to do with it, but people are, some of them are running away from this type of job instead of running towards it. In the last eight years, we have modernized our recruitment, promotional testing, and training to yield top-quality employees for the city. We have brought our incident command system to the proper standard required within personnel, within personnel limitations for safe and effective operations. We have replaced outdated and unsafe equipment with modern, highly efficient replacements through CIP, grants, and proper budgeting. And I can't thank both the city manager and the city taxpayers for all the work they've done to bring our equipment up to a better standard. To be very frank, when I came to the city, we were driving around in a lot of junk. It was abused, and it looked good on the outside, it had forty-seven coats of wax on it, but the underside was rusting out, and it wasn't reliable. And I can tell you right now, our equipment is far more reliable and far more problematic in some respects because they come with forty-seven computers built into them now that we don't really like, but it's the nature of the business. So, but anyway, through the help of the taxpayers and the city government, we were able to update our fleet. We have hired multiple employees from the local high school program to help fill our ranks, which has been wonderful. I think we have five, we have six different students, I call them students, younger firefighters that have come out of the program at the high school, so it's an excellent feeder program for us. Overall, our staff has a sixty-four percent change in the last eleven years. So sixty-four percent of the people that were here when I arrived are no longer here. We have that many new faces down there. We currently have twenty-four paramedics on staff and three currently in training. We also have five advanced EMTs, and the rest of our staff is a minimum of an EMT. And I can say right from my rank, all the way down to the newest person through the door, all of our personnel are cross-trained in fire rescue and medical. All of our officers have met national standards of training to be officers. We are a leader in the region for firefighter safety and rapid intervention through highly-trained instructors who have what it takes to keep all our personnel active, ready, and safe. We have developed and adhere to an active labor management program that is based on strong communications, honesty, respect, and educated consensus-based needs of our community and the department. We meet a minimum of once a month to discuss the items of mutual interest, and I can't tell you how much this has meant for the betterment of the organization and the relationship with the city in the reduction of grievances and items that were misunderstandings and that sort of thing that we were able to work out at a much lower level because of this ongoing communication that we have. This is an interesting portion here because if you did not know that January is Cancer Awareness Month for firefighters. So, but we have developed cancer prevention and safety programs through the proper care, cleaning, and issuance of equipment, such as isolation of contaminated gear, multiple sets of gear available to each employee, as well as the issuance of ballistic protection vests and proper rescue and wildland firefighting gear. This in despite a proper decontamination area within our station. We do what we can within the confines of our facilities, but is grossly inadequate as most is done on the apparatus floor or in the back parking lot, weather permitting. Much in the case of like the fire we had on Elm Street last week, when we got back to the station at about three-thirty or four o'clock in the morning, I don't remember what time it was really. Most of the decontamination of all the air packs and hose and everything had to be done on the apparatus floor because outside it was below freezing. In the summertime, we'll do it on, out back on the apron, on the apron in the back of the station because it's the only places that we have to do that. Our personnel have done extensive active shooter training and are continuing to do more so to be prepared for the work within our partner agencies involved in the same. This is going to be an ongoing thing for, I hate to say it, but it's going to be an ongoing thing that we're plagued with because of the society we live in, or thing, but I can assure you that the work that's being done within your city with training with the police and the fire department is far above many others in the state and far above many others in the country. So, and as our Commissioner of Public Safety alluded to back from our situation that went on in November, we are not Texas, so. We have developed an automatic mutual aid program that brings more resources to the city when needed and without delay. Our staff has worked tirelessly with the city code division to not only develop new safe buildings, but to bring old problem structures to a new level for the safety of our community. More help is needed in this ever-increasing aspect of work for the city and for public education. Our Fire Marshal's Office is light-years ahead of the State Fire Marshal's Office in getting plans reviewed and approved in a timely manner, and this is paramount for the betterment and the fiscal prospering aspects of the city. We have equipped him with the great, with some computer technology that helps him with this area through his plan table. He's able to work on plans with architects and be able to send things back and forth electronically, be able to draw on these, the screen, be able to show the needs, and it saves all kinds of time going back and forth so that these projects are done quicker. And he also has helps with education of thousands of our school kids and school staff. In September of two thousand twenty-two, we met for a second time to update our strategic planning, and the following initiatives were discussed. We talked about budgets, CIP and budget priorities, and a lot of those priorities and requests are in the budget that was submitted to the manager's office for this upcoming year. We talked about the fire department's organizational values, and I won't go into all of them unless you can ask me questions about them, but our organizational values are accountability, transparency, service excellence, teamwork and family, integrity and honesty, embracing diversity, honor and respect, communications, and innovation. We also talked about relations by objective, which is again, is a modification of the labor management partnership to work more using labor's input to help move our operations in positive directions. We talked a lot about training, and we have developed a training plan that was developed and is now instituted by Chief Rick Smith that will cover all our needs for the upcoming year. And that's going to be something that'll be recurring every year as he redrafts what's needed for the next year after that. We talked about response models. What apparatus is the busiest? What's not so busy? How do we share that workload? What are we sending on to what calls? All that sort of thing. We're not trying to use excessive resources at any point, but we're trying to get the right resources to the right type of call in the right amount of time. We talked about our EMS delivery system, and that's still going to be an ongoing work in progress. We still have a lot more to do to modernize our EMS delivery system, although we, the care we give is top-notch, the way we get there and how many people we send sometimes varies, and that's being worked out. We also talked about enhancement of community relations and the involvement of more people. There's still a lot more work to be done there. We talked, we talked about stronger codes and enforcement, and we also talked about the use of data to help dictate our operations. In this day and age, everything's all about data, and it proves to us when we're using too much fuel, what truck's using too much fuel, you know, is this the right piece of equipment to use on this time? Do we have this many people in the right positions? All that makes better sense because the tax dollars never get bigger, they only get tighter and smaller because all our expenses go up, so it's that ever-diminishing type of thing. And then, of course, you've heard me say this one more time, we talked about recruitment and retention, and we're just going to have to get as creative as we can be to, to bang the doors on every place possible, searching out through the colleges, you know, the high school program is a given, but all those places that we need to go to find new employees and stir up new interest in the service that we, I feel so proud about for the last forty-three years, is that it's a noble service, it's, I've enjoyed every day of it, but it's one of those things, it's, it's a little disappointing to see people that don't see what I saw and, and not have the same interest in the job. In summary, I feel that the core of our department is in great shape and the caliber of personnel is second to none, and will continue to serve our citizens with exceptional care, but we need more support to correct the insufficiencies such as pay and facilities that affect our people in many ways and keep the Sanford Fire Department at a disadvantage. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. It's been a pleasure working for the city of Sanford. I also didn't mention, and I don't, I'm not sure I did, but City Manager Buck worked with us on both our strategic planning sessions. Back in two thousand fourteen, he was still fairly new to the game, and just the aspect of bringing the city manager into your department and having him sit down with your employees and work with them on different breakout groups and discussions and everything, it created some relationships and some ability that people realize he's not that guy behind the glass wall all the time. You know, he has sound interests in, in what the city does and how it's presented, and he also helped in a lot of way in guiding some of our people that were misaligned in what the city did. And maybe, you know, we don't always have the best information, so it's kind of like telephone, somebody tells you something, somebody, it gets turned around a little bit as you go along, and he was able to help straighten out a lot of those misgivings in both times that he sat with us. So I appreciate the time he sent with us. But with that, I'm, thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Chief Benardi, thank you for your very comprehensive report. I also want to thank you for the amount of service that you've given to the Sanford community, your leadership. You're part of the reason we are looking at two pieces of land to build two new fire stations. You've done an excellent job at helping to educate our community in the need. I enjoyed your tours that you gave with the fire department. That was very early on that you did, and you were very passionate about it then in the need. And, and I think that's part of the reason why we will, I, I think in this community, I think they now see the need. So thank you for your leadership in that. Also, thank you for all the staff training that you've done throughout the years. I think it's amazing how we've gone from being just firefighters now to firefighter paramedic. And hearing some of the data that you've said over the years, we're now between seventy, eighty percent paramedic-type call-outs, which is just amazing. You spoke in your presentation about the change that's happened from the previous generations, and I think we don't even know what's going to happen in the, for the next generation and what we have to be prepared for, but we definitely, because of all the stuff that you have spoken to us about, about what the fire station needs, I think we'll be more prepared for the future. And you've continually said that we need to at least look at building a place fifty years or more out so that we're meeting all those needs. So I want to thank you for that. Do any of the councilors have any questions that they would like to ask of Chief Benardi?
Great presentation.
Nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public participation?
Who's got it?
Well, it looks like our, our first person who would like to present is Bill Brink. Are you related to anybody up here?
Several, no, not several, just you. Hi, my name is Bill Brink. My wife and I are residents down in South Sanford. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Bob Stackpole for your reelection and Pete Trenchmontane for being elected. Congratulations, that's a great job. I'd also like to thank the, the citizens of Sanford who have elected Mayor Brink to the position. I think she'll do a pretty good job. And thirdly, on a personal note, I think I'm going to spend a lot more personal time by myself over the next two years, and thank you for that.
Mr. Buck, next time he puts his name on the list, could you cross it off before it gets here? The next person, Hazen Carpenter.
Well, first off, I want to congratulate Mayor Becky Brink. I want to congratulate Robert Stackpole and Peter Trenchmontane for the swearing-in, and I want to thank Steve Buck, our city manager, and the entire council for their support for Sanford, and we look forward to a successful two thousand twenty-three, a happy and successful year to you and to Sanford. I'm here this evening because I missed the last meeting, I was very disturbed that the Trails Committee got discussed again, but the issue I want to touch on is the trail. A lot of talk was about the trail, the how it was built, what it can sustain and so forth. So I'll give you a little history and hope you understand. The rail trail was built about a hundred years ago to high standards. It used to carry thousands of tons of freight across there, and it stood up all those years. What happened after the rail went out? The rails got moved, the ties got pulled out. It never really got secured and graded properly, so erosion occurred. The trail was open. Vehicles with four-wheel drive started using it. Some sections continued to get washed out, and it deteriorated very bad. But fortunately, after the Sanford Trails Committee was formed, we were given authority, fortunately, and we had the knowledge, and we have handled every aspect of the rebuilding, development, and maintenance of the rail trail. And every time we did it, we did it to high standards. High standards with permission, submitting plans, going out to bid, carrying out the work. Some of the, the rail trail was built where they cut through ledge because that's solid. Others had to be filled with gravel. Most of the wetlands they crossed, they used sand because sand is a self-packing material, self-compacting. It's a fine material, it's self-compacting. So they used sand on a lot of the areas they had to build up on wetlands. But it stood up very well because it's self-compacting. But those areas are harder to work because you have to actually mix and aggregate into it to sustain the top surface before you top it. Whenever we did any of the work, which we graded, it was done with a bulldozer weighing about thirty-ton. Also, ran over with ten-wheel trucks, double-axle, weighing upwards forty-tonnes. One section that had washed out on the rail trail, we rebuilt, we put in two-and-a-half feet of rubble stone, two to ten inches in diameter, put gravel on top of that, a barrier and a top surface. These places stood up good. But when they were built, I want to tell you how solid this is. They're built, we ran over, and these trucks, when they would bring in material, would dump and grade, and they would run over with these trucks, these ten-wheelers weighing forty, sixty thousand pounds. So that rail trail is very substantial, and the sections we have done stood up well until the traffic got on there destroying them. Some other sections need work. The ATVs, we've heard you say it's the heavy ATVs. It's not the heavy ATVs. I just told you, we ran over these with ten-wheelers, forty-ton. It's not the weight of the ATV. It's the suspension. It's the tire treads and the suspension. The suspension of the ATVs articulate. An ATV is just what it says, and I have nothing against ATVs in the right place. All-terrain vehicle. That means they go through mud, sand, over stumps, over rocks, over everything. It's an all-terrain, that's what they're made for. So when this all-terrain vehicle gets on this beautiful surface, and believe me, when we finished those trails, you couldn't see a tire mark on it, it looked like this rug here. But those vehicles destroy the trail. They're all-terrain vehicle. And when they go over there, they create ruts. When there's water on there, they create puddles. They drive out the gravel and the sand into the drainage ditches we've created. This plugs up the drainage ditches. More water goes onto the trail, more gets washed out, and the trail gets destroyed. I have pictures I can show you. I don't have time to put them up here tonight. I have pictures I can show you when we completed the trail and how soon after that, when they were destroyed. We will never make ATV and a beautiful trail for Sanford. We will never make ATV and a beautiful trail for Sanford compatible because they destroy the trail. This trail should not have ATV traffic on it. The reason I bring this paper up here when I come and talk to you is so I won't get carried away. But believe me, we haven't even touched on the issues enough of the environment. The endangered species, the animal life, the waterfowl, the plant life that's out there, the beautiful experience of people going out there for an adventure without noise. The fact that it's such a healthy adventure. The hospital promotes this type of thing. We haven't talked about all that, what an asset this is to Sanford, how it should be preserved, just like any of our parks and stuff. We haven't talked about all that. We should. And the cost too. We have all those figures. Our Trails Committee has done this for years. We have all that information. Some of that land up there is protected through the state as Wildlife Conservancy. There are, the Massimoey Land Trust has five properties that touch the rail trail. Thousands, hundreds of acres, and there are other properties close by that are close to the rail trail. All have trails for people to use access for a great outdoor adventure. And all of this was a fantastic greenway, one to be admired by any state, any place. A greenway, a passage for wildlife, adventure, and trails everywhere. I'll sit down. That's why I bring this paper. I can't carry it away because there's so much you've got to talk about on this. And, but as long as these ATVs go on there, I'm sorry, they destroy the surface, they destroy the trail. Thank you for your time.
Hazen, thank you very much for your presentation. There are no public hearings, no consent agenda, no old business, so we're going to move on to new business. Twenty-three dash three dash zero one, order to elect a deputy mayor to the city council for 2023 pursuant to section two ten of the Sanford City Charter. Do I have a nomination? Councilman Hanselman?
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilor Maura Hurley as our deputy mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, do we have any discussions?
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? Thank you. That's why you be good at this. Any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Maura Hurley as deputy mayor?
That was my last year. I have to take a time.
It was all five to zero? Do you have to change your sign now?
No.
Oh, you're still?
Larissa's like, yeah, the ceremony's for the mayor.
Do we have to do anything else under that? Or where else is that? Okay. Section twenty-two dash five-five-three dash zero one, order to approve the proposed 2023-2024 budget review schedule and format which shall govern the city council's work per section six oh two point two of the Sanford City Charter. Steve, do you have any comments on this?
I'm sorry. Compensation is set pursuant to six oh two. Historically, it's been set at four thousand dollars.
And the mayor can't, yeah, and then it says next, but it's been this since 2004, 2005?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong item.
Never gone up. It's just enough to?
Hold on, he's on the wrong one.
I was looking up something else.
That's down here.
Oh, we're doing the budget schedule?
Yes, the budget schedule.
I'm sorry. My fault. So the budget review, the proposed schedule is in your packet for you this evening. The front part of that lays out the format for which is coming next, where Ronnie and I will sit with each individual department. We'll go over those budgets line by line. It then provides for on January, I think, thirty-first? I don't have it open in front of me right now. Wrong document open here. I was trying to get. Thank you, buddy. Yep. Oh, yes. Yeah, workshop with the city council for budget education. And then the review historically would start with the budget committee in March, but pursuant to the recent changes to the charter, that will now be with the city council. And I believe there's proposed changes to that, the dates that are in there for this evening, and we would be open for discussion there. And then it calls, as it historically has, it calls out, starting in April fourteenth, sixty days prior to the election, that we submit the ballot to our city clerk so that it can be printed. And then we move forward from there for the approval process by the city council as well as for the approval process for the school, which still has to be submitted to the June ballot of this year.
Go ahead, Council Hurley.
I'm going to make a motion to discuss.
I'd second that.
Do we have to take an all in favor of discussion?
Nope.
Okay. So, good. Councilman Hurley, Hanselman?
Well, essentially, as I was looking over the budget schedule and thinking about, at least for myself as a city councillor, Tuesdays are earmarked as City of Sanford days. And I, generally, everybody knows I'm not available those days. So as I was thinking about this opportunity with us now as the budget committee, I wondered about our ability to switch from the Thursday meetings over to Tuesday in conjunction with our existing council schedule and try to continue the Tuesday schedule versus doing Tuesdays and Thursdays during the month of March. So I'd like to discuss some options with that.
And I'll just add to that if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So Ann kind of threw this by me today, and the idea would be that we'd come in at four, we'd do a couple hours of the budget, and then we'd either go to our regular meeting or we'd continue a little bit with the budget or do another, you know, executive session on the workshop days if we had more to discuss, but we'd have that extra time on those weeks. But on the weeks we have a regular city council, we'd just be here early, we'd do two hours. Then we'd go to our regular city council meeting, do that. If we had any executive sessions, we could do it after. One of the beauties of this is on the second meeting in March, the twenty-first, we could do, have budget discussion from four to six. And then during our regular city council meeting, we could actually have the public hearing on the budget, which a lot more people watch the city council meetings than would watch a separate meeting on a Thursday discussing the budget, which is what we used to do. So we like the idea of kind of putting everything on a Tuesday and not having ourselves out two days a week and, you know, just get used to this, a new schedule. And I believe, I don't know if Steve's been made aware of the idea and what he thinks of it.
Yes, I met with Steve and?
The only thing that came to mind later today was we'll have to be mindful of how we set up the city hall for the combined, for the budget, so that you can move rapidly from that back up here to the diocese for the council meeting. So we'll figure out those details for you. Just, I have to keep that in mind.
So we're looking at in March, the Tuesdays, which would be the seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth. And we have to have, by the twenty-first, that meeting has to be the public hearing.
Right. According to the charter, the second, yeah, two weeks after the presentation of the budget by the city and the school has to be the present, the public hearing.
Now, is, does that have to be an amendment to this?
Well, we?
Do we know, Steve?
If you could simply propose that as an amendment to the budget meeting calendar as presented. You propose those amendments.
So I?
So do I have a proposal to amend that?
So I would make a motion that we amend the budget calendar so that instead of meeting on the Thursdays of March second, nine, sixteen, twenty-three, and thirty, we meet for the budget on the Tuesdays, March seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, twenty-eighth, which I would anticipate we'd have, if we need to really bang it out, we'd have that time. And worst case, on April first, fourth, do any further work before our regular meeting, when we would have the vote.
Excellent. Do I have a second on that? Pete Trenchmontane, for a second. All those in favor? Of the amendment? Now we have to go back to all those, we need a vote on the calendar.
Correct.
Do I have a first on the calendar?
We approve the proposed calendar as amended.
Thank you. And second, Council Hanselman?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And I'd just like to point out, it does take a whole council to train a mayor, so thank you, guys.
Before you know it, you'll just be smooth as butter.
Yeah, no. All those in favor, we do it. Hundred percent.
Thank you for that, Ann. That was Ann's suggestion. I liked it.
Yeah, that's a great. Now, twenty-three dash eight dash zero one, order to set time and place for regular council meetings at least twice per month pursuant to section two oh nine of the Sanford City Charter. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion that the city council has its regular meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of each month. During the year, unless adapted. For holidays.
Okay. Do I have a second? Councilman?
Second.
Trenchmontane?
We're all like waiting for you to jump in.
And all those in favor?
Now it's Steve's.
You ready, Steve? Twenty-three dash one dash zero one, order to set the annual compensation for the city councillors pursuant to section two oh six of the Sanford City Charter. I would just like to make one comment. I think you guys work very hard for what you are paid. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we set the compensation at four thousand per annum, per councillor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but that's no change.
No change.
No change.
It's been that way for?
I just want to, I just want to make that clear, that that's no change. And so I second that motion.
All those in favor? The next is twenty-three dash seven dash zero one, on order to set the annual compensation for the city mayor pursuant to section three oh five of the Sanford City Charter. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we set the city mayor's salary at five thousand dollars, which by charter is no more than twenty-five percent higher than a city councillor.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Council Trenchmontane, thank you. All those in favor?
All the money you're going to make.
I know.
And we think you'll be working very hard for that money also, Becky.
You're going to have so much fun.
Steve has something to say. Can I just ask a question? So from a historical perspective, so I read this, you know, as I have a hundred times, right? And I read it again today. Why was the charter written this specific way? It says, uh, the compensation paid to any individual council but at least, meaning twenty-five percent, at least twenty-five percent greater, but not more than twenty-five percent greater. There's no range.
So, so at this point, usually, usually I'm proud about some of the work I did on the charter, but I'm going to pretend I didn't write that.
There's just no range.
Twenty-three dash twelve dash zero one, order to assign city council to various council subcommittees as council representatives on the boards and committees. And I just want to take a second to explain, hopefully we have a lot of people listening out there. Somehow, people have the misunderstanding that all of our work is done here. And we have many subcommittees that all the council people serve on. And the majority of our work in digging out information and having the staff members present to us happens at that point. So there's a lot of work that goes on before we vote on something here. So sometimes it looks like we're just quickly voting on something where we might have already spent months investigating and doing stuff. So it's not really just a quick thing. So, um, and I've got one other thing to add to this. Let me see if I've got it right. There was one that was left off from the subcommittees, and that's we also need to, it's the Appointment Committee under section A. And we had Mayor Becky Brink, Council Deputy Mayor Maura Hurley, and Council Bob Stackpole on that committee. So add that to the large list that you already have. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the list, that we support the list provided to us by the mayor of the various committees. I think you're going to have fun, Pete. I do.
And do we have a second? Council Hanselman?
I'll second that.
And all those in favor? Oh, do you have a comment?
Just for the public who doesn't have the packet in front of them, is it possible to just quickly read through? Or does that feel too cumbersome?
We can, I'm not going to read everybody's names, but we could read the topics of the subcommittees that are on there.
Well, maybe we just need to update the website to re-include that in our bio. They were removed from our bio in the new website format. I think it's important to understand which councillors are on which subcommittees.
Yes, I think it is also. And how many subcommittees that we have. I mean, there's a huge number. Thank you. All those in favor? And let's see, next, I've got to keep this one out. And, say that again? Yes. The next one is twenty-three dash nine dash zero one, in order to make appointments to the various city boards and committees pursuant to section two oh five point one of the city charter. And, or did I just read that one? No, that's the correct one. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following people to open seats on the following boards and committees. Airport Advisory Committee Board, Stuart Miller, who's an incumbent, James Dyrmann, an incumbent, and William Grant, a new person, all with the expiration dates of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Land Bank Authority, we are reappointing Joe Sevigny with an expiration on his term of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven. The Planning Board, which is having a significant change, we have the following incumbents, John Jack McAdam, Crystal Tenney, and Everett Lenny Hoare, whose terms will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And two new members, Jase Clark and Kyle Landry, who are filling unexpired terms until the end of this year, twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. The Recreation Advisory Board, Michael Perry, who's an incumbent with an expiration of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Christine King and Jessica Light, two new members with expiration terms of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Jeff Twyron, Tiffany Moreau, and Heidi Brennan with expiration dates of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. We're trying to set up the three-year terms on this. The Sanford Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Rebecca Ames, who's an incumbent, and Michael Jean, also an incumbent, with expirations of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. And the Trails, oh, we got a few more. The Trails Development and Urban Forestry Committee, all incumbents, Katie Menendez Hall, Dolly Hutchins, Hazen Carpenter, David Parent, all with expirations of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. And finally, the Design Review Committee, Kelly Tarbox and Tiffany Moreau with expirations of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. I believe we are, that's my motion, with all those people. I'll make my comment after.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And Deputy Mayor Hurley, did you have a comment?
I'm just going to make a comment that we're still looking for members of a few boards and committees, so please check the city website.
Excellent. Excellent. All those in, any other comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Twenty-three dash ten dash zero one, order to review and adopt the city council rules procedure for twenty twenty-three pursuant to section two thirteen of the city charter. And there's an, already we need an amendment. So do, Steve, do I take a vote on this first and then make the amendment? Or do I make the amendment?
I'll for any amendments.
Okay. Okay. Sure. So, so done. And do you want to, this is the amendment right here?
So, I'd like to make the suggestion of amendments to the rules and procedure before we vote on them. Under Section 41 Standing Committees, under Section A, subsection A, designated committees eliminate the Economic Development Committee. And under subsection C designated committees eliminated, eliminate the Housing Authority Council Representative pursuant to the legal opinion that the council cannot have a representative on the Housing Authority Board of Directors due to a conflict of interest. So, those are my two amendments.
And do I have to get a second before I have a discussion? Do we have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And I just wanted to point out that the reason we decided we didn't need the Economic Development Committee is because we already have, we have a council now, and we already have somebody on that. So, it was redundant to have that.
Right, and I'll make also a supporting statement that ever since we've had a council rep and a really well-working economic development board, typically by the time something comes to the council that needs review, all seven of us can do it together without the need for a subcommittee to look at it first. We just meet an executive session, we can review it as seven people. So, it makes it redundant having three people looking at it and then bringing it to seven people. So, it really works well with all seven of us. It has been very smooth.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
The amendment?
Of the amendment? And then do I have a motion to, to accept the rules of procedure?
I'll make a motion that we accept the rules and order of business, our rules of procedure as amended.
Do I have a second? Stackpole?
Second.
All those in favor? Now, 23-11-01, order to review and adopt the City Council Code of Conduct for 2023. And do I have a motion? Hanselman?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept as is.
Do I have a second? Council Stackpole?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to state that we're going to be having a workshop and we'll be talking about this at that workshop. So, we might be updating some of it or tweaking it that. And we'll be bringing it back to the council at that time if we make any changes. So, all those in favor of this at this point? All five? Thank you. 23-15-01, order to review the city hall room use policy and adopt proposed amendments. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the amendments. I'd like to hear from the city manager.
Thank you. Do I have to do a second before that? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And for discussion, Steve, could we?
Yeah, so the current policy that you have before you, absent its amendment, was adopted in September of 2014. At that point in time, you know, this is pre-COVID. At that point in time, the, and this was pre-construction of the high school and such, there were individuals or parties making requests to utilize the historic auditorium as well as the other meeting spaces that are present here in both the city hall and the city hall annex. Also, pre-COVID, the interpretation in the policy of elections was such that those individuals, those committees that were involved in the election of people at the local county and state levels were not charged for the, for the third-floor conference room space adjacent to the council chambers. We went through during COVID, all of those facilities were closed down for that duration. So, we went through almost two to two and a half years of those spaces not being allowed to utilize for the public and therefore no request. Now that we're past that period of time, the spaces are again reopened. Requests have come forward for the utilization of the various spaces, one of which was a third-floor conference room. And so, administration is now seeking clarification as to the interpretation of elections as it was not defined in the past policy specifically, such that those individuals and/or entities that are requesting to use that space that are involved in the election of individuals at the municipal, county, or state level would not be charged for the use of that particular room. So, in the amendments that are in your packet, outlined in both red and blue, the First Amendment would be for the amendment for Sanford City Halls a not-for-profit tax-supported institution with the rooms designed primarily for the use in city hall governmental and program-related activities, so that's an addition. And specifically in the examples such as city council, city school committee, school committee, city committees and boards meetings. And secondarily, for municipal, county, or state party committees, that's the amendment, for elections. And then I pulled from the state definition of 21-A subsection 1013-A. So, that gets into what is an appropriately political party as registered by the state of Maine, so they would be recognized and we could go by that definition and not charge for the use of that room. Applicants has not changed, applicant responsibility has not changed, 50% deposit as down. And then under equipment, there was a further addition for clarification that reservation for use of a room in city hall does not include use of equipment without advanced written approval. The reason for that is the absent, absent them just making an assumption. Many times, we have to prepare for the use of that equipment and ensure that the equipment is being used properly and further restored post-meetings. Rooms access and hours, we've changed that for the new city hall hours to be 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday, for when those, the rooms would be available. And this is the first time that you see the deletion. We're requesting the deletion of the city hall auditorium evenings and weekends as previously was allowed pre-COVID. The reason being, that facility has not been restored. It is, it has the lack of proper restrooms and accessibility. When it has been used in the past, you have to have all three floors open in order to get the capacity limit in there. So, you have, basically, you've opened the entire building to access by the public. So, generally, we need to provide staff to be here during such an opening. It was also made that when I first started here, they were looking for leveraged funding towards the possible rehabilitation of that space. And by my take, the investment was made by the community to the Performing Arts Center. Therefore, that, the city hall restoration of that historic space took a backseat at that point in time. So, we're asking to strike that out until such time as the city is able to make an investment and refurbish that, those facilities at that point in time. As far as parking, it notes that the parking is severely limited at city hall and off-premise parking is strongly encouraged and recommended when you're, if you have a larger-scale event that's scheduled in one of these spaces. Talks about refreshments. The rental fee remains unchanged from 2014. A fee of $50 per hour will be charged for the use of any of the meeting spaces. So, for this room, for example, it covers the time spent by facilities services to deconstruct this room, set the room up for the meeting, deconstruct it again, and reset for either school committee and/or city council meetings. And then that the rooms may be reserved during the normal city hall hours of Monday through Thursday. That's an amendment, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. So, those are the amendments that we're seeking as far as the facilities and room use policy.
And Pete, did you know what room they're talking about when they talk about the city hall auditorium? It's not this room? That part? Yes, okay. All right, good.
Heard about the basketball here, but I've never heard about the box.
Wow. All right. Do I have any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five to zero, okay. Now, on to council members' comments. Do we have any comments from any of the councillors that you would like to know?
Start from the end, start with Mr. Trenchmontain.
Okay, I was not going to do it that way. I was, I was going to ask if there were any comments. I wasn't going to call on each one. Let me explain what happened in the past. That they would call on each councillor individually, and sometimes people would feel like they had to say something. And so, I was going to kind of open it up because there is nothing in our procedure that says I have to call on each one of you. So, that way, if you feel like you don't want to make a comment, you don't have to make a comment. But you could feel free to make a comment because we like to hear from people. So, that's what's going to take place from this point on, at least for two years. So, does anyone have a comment that they would like to make? Council Hanselman?
I'd like to comment, Madam Mayor, that I don't like changes in structure. Just kidding. Two comments. One, I really want to congratulate Council Trenchmontain, Council Stackpole, and Mayor Brink on your new positions or continued positions. I'm excited to work with you all. And then, Steve, when you mentioned the progress with Set and Trust, I saw past Counselor Tuttle's face in my mind. And I just know he's doing a little dance somewhere in celebration and is continuing to watch the progress happening there, so.
It will never happen, Stephen.
I still, still think he's disbelieving it wherever he is.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to thank everybody, the voters that believed in me. And I look forward to working with council, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, the assistant manager and city manager, and all the council. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hurloughy?
Well, I'm also the only not newly-elected person. So, I want to extend my congratulations to all three of you with your new positions. I think it's going to be a good year. I wish Jonathan was here for this first meeting. Pete, I think you're going to enjoy some of the committees you're on. I think we're going to be busy as we try to get a fire station, still work on housing, and solid waste. I believe we have some contracts coming up, so that makes, you know, very interesting discussion. And I hope you have the opportunity to sit in and just watch some of the other subcommittees, which helps you, and read the backup material. It does help with the, with the work we do here to kind of keep up with what all the other committees are doing. And you just don't get to participate in the discussion, but listening in is always very helpful. Thank you.
Council Stackpole?
Well, everybody else commented, so now I feel like I have to.
Did you feel pressured?
Yeah, I feel pressured now.
Don't worry, we'll get used to it.
I did say in the past, thank you to all the voters. If you didn't hear me that time, once again, thank you for your support. And I'm looking forward to another three years working with the outstanding people that we have here, both on the municipal side managing the city and the members of your, your city council. And I mean that sincerely. And I think I'm going to stop there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, here we go. Now, any future agenda items? Would any of the councillors like to add anything to the agendas? Not tonight, no. And for you to understand, Pete, that typically, this would be the time the councillors could suggest anything to be on the agenda. It isn't always immediate. Sometimes they have to go to a subcommittee first if you have something you want to add to an agenda. So, we try to get to it as soon as possible. But I don't know how long, sometimes it's in a subcommittee for a while if they need to do some research. Okay? All right. At 7:25, we have adjourned. Thank you.